So call the mission.
The mission.
Oh, mission critical.
Call the meeting to um order at five oh one. Stand for pledge. Correspondents?
Yes. Summary of letters to the police commission received from a resident, sheriff's officer, Simsbury Police Department. Resident wanted to take the opportunity to thank the Simsbury Police Department and offer first responders, thank and other first responders for their quote swift and professional response during a challenging situation. Their dedication and service to our community are truly commendable. Received, received from a resident, residents in reference to officers Capazelli and Papa Larsic. This resident had called for a medical emergency and wanted to thank the officers for their kindness and compassion. Correspondence received from a resident in reference to Sergeant Kushman. This resident wanted to thank Sergeant Kushman for the high level of care he provided to them and how impressed they were with quick response time. They wanted to acknowledge all the department does as, what it does is, does so well and does so well. That's it.
Okay.
I still can't speak, that's it.
Okay, um next we're gonna go for the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. One abstention. Um, so, next on the agenda is the uh reports from, from myself and the um the chief. However, I'd like to know if you guys want to reverse it, just in case if, Mr. Ziegler, is that, did I pronounce it right?
Yes.
Just in case if Mr. Ziegler doesn't wanna be here for all of our others. So, have you guys thought about switching?
I don't think, I don't think we can, it's a special meeting, it's a special meeting.
You can't? Ah.
We can't adjust your genitals.
That's okay, I'm okay.
Sorry, I tried. Okay. Well, let's go over the reports. Um, so first is the chairperson's report. So, I think it was last week I went to um the meeting with the board of selection. It went well, we um pretty much, well, first of all, before I go there, thank you so much for your help. And then also for you and the chief making sure that I was prepared for, for the meeting, so first of all, thank you for that. Um, but the meeting went well, um I went over everything that we had discussed in terms of the budget. Um, they're going to go back to do their own thing and, the next thing is like the March, I believe? The next time they meet?
Yes.
So, um and then the town, me and Joe will present the entire faculty to them.
So historically, I would go to all those meetings, like you guys would give me the list of the dates, so if you could just shoot that out when you have them?
He's changed the process up a little bit, so it's, but yeah, as soon as we.
I think it's nice over there, so then if they have questions, they can. They might answer as well as I.
Right, and they asked, they asked quite a few questions um at the meeting. Eric was there um at the meeting as well. I think it went on there.
Yeah. Just more clarifying questions, no stumpers, but just.
Right.
I can't talk, this was, did you say this, it was, it was good?
Yeah. Alright, next one that I have to report. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm lying. Um, so. The, we've received a request from the Charter Revision Committee. They wanna know whether or not if we wanna make any changes to the police commission's char- um charter. So if you guys can just review that um sometime within a week, I sent an email asking when they need comments by. So if you guys read through it, think that we need to make any changes or revisions, just shoot me an email. And then I'll give that um information over to, over to them. Um, one thing maybe they did want me to let you guys know is that if um whatever we submit to them, it won't be read out loud, but it will be on public record. Just so you're aware of that.
Are we, so we're submitting something as the commission, one of our comments and then you'll synthesize them into it?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Okay, and then that concludes my, my report. So I know the chief isn't here, you have a report for that, sure.
Uh, just to update on a few things, uh some personnel updates. Field training progress. Officer Nick Imond recently completed his field training program last week. He's now out on his own. Uh, Officers Nick Longen, Longen Nikro and Mario Mariano are progressing well in their field training program and have an anticipated completion date at some point in April. Other staffing issues, the department's still actively working to fill vacancies, including two sworn officer positions, one dispatcher, which would be this position here, and one and a half positions in records. Interviews are ongoing and several applicants have advanced to the background investigation stage. And we're optimistic about the quality of the applicants and hope to fill these roles expeditiously. One officer recently returned to full duty after an extended leave, though we still have several others out uh on long-term injuries. For accreditation update, we have a, starting on January thirty first, we'll be doing our four-year remote accreditation review. So they'll be doing a remote review of our policies, I think about a week. This week-long assessment will include the evaluation of approximately one hundred and twenty-five policies to ensure compliance. Uh, and I'm sorry, concluding on February eighth. And then the physical onsite accreditation review, that would be the four-year um review. Be on March tenth to the thirteenth. During this process, two assessors will come to the department, conduct interviews, ride-alongs, facility inspections, as well as other assessments. Additional updates will be provided as the review dates appropriate. That's one that we're very down with.
Right.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Uh, the one point five for records? Were we bumping someone for that half, or we, no, okay, I could remember that was increasing our part timer.
Okay, consolidated monthly reports? I don't know whether or not I think we have any questions on those.
I noticed there was an uptick in suspicious persons, or just?
Just a.
Just as?
Yeah. No trends or anything.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
I'm pleased to see that the year, the budget report that we have uh, we spent forty-seven percent of our budget and we're fifty percent the way through the year.
Yeah.
So we are a bit under budget, which is not a bad thing to be at a time of year.
Um, I do have a question though about the, the gasoline. So I thought that we were making some savings with the hybrid vehicles, so what happened there?
So, what happens is we pay for it all upfront. So, we are seeing savings there. But we pay for it upfront, it's just a billing thing, but it's, the way it's shown in the budget, so. Pay for it and then reverse it back. It's like, so we, it comes out all at the same time.
Okay.
The gasoline budget is lost. So they move it somewhere else.
Okay. Um, and then I had a question on um with dispatch, so I'm guessing that the overtime is because we're, we have a vacancy rate or and that it should be. Oh, at the top with the start datas, um the data says twenty twenty-three.
Dispatch started.
Dispatch and the, the control. Wow, weird. So next on the agenda is the new dispatcher recommendation.
Alright, so I would like to introduce you to Kevin Ziegler. Your police rec men, Kevin Ziegler, the position of police dispatcher at Simsbury. Kevin grew up in New Britain, has devoted his life to public safety and community service. Began his journey at the age of seventeen when he earned his EMT certification. Since then, he's built a distinguished career both in volunteer and professional roles. Kevin has served with the Newington Volunteer Ambulance and the Newington Volunteer Fire Department since two thousand and one, achieving the rank of lieutenant. Professionally, he has worked as an EMT for at ambulances. Uh, spent fourteen years with New Britain EMS and has been serving as an EMT with O'Line Ambulance since two thousand and fifteen. Kevin's colleagues and associates describe him with high praise, using adjectives such as honest and truthful, always positive, leads by example, hard worker who grows up above and beyond, goes out of his way to help people, and all-around kind human being. Throughout his career, Kevin has demonstrated exceptional communication skills, calm and steady demeanor, and an unwavering dedication to serving others. His deep passion for community service and commitment to public safety make him an ideal candidate for this position. Kevin's interest in becoming a police dispatcher at Simsbury reflects his dedication to public safety and his desire to contribute meaningfully to the community. We're confident that Kevin will be a valuable asset to our team and recommend him for this position.
Okay. You guys have any questions for our Mr. Ziegler?
Oh, you looked at me like we're starting in the middle, I was like, alright. Um, why Simsbury? I know you have a, a Newington and that area, why, what's your, like, how did Simsbury attract you?
So I grew up in New Britain, which is a large city, um always kinda got lost in high school, into the crowds and um I always preferred the smaller town. Uh, when I moved to Newington, Newington was a smaller town at that point and has grown uh quite a bit. Uh, I'm looking to go somewhere that is smaller, more family-oriented, where, you know, smaller people get to know uh different people. Um, not just a number, where you're, you're actually part of the, the team.
I'm gonna pass the floor.
Okay, you have any questions?
Um, go back to me.
Okay.
Um, Kevin, do you have, I'm trying to look, do you have any dispatching experience prior to this?
Um, I don't have any certifications at this point, um when I did work for at ambulances, I did fill in um here and there. Um, there was a little different back then, it was just a radio and paper, writing things down and punching with a time clock. Um, but I feel that I'm good with computers and obviously use computer programs frequently, so that'll be a big help in.
Yeah, I'm sure I'm in yours, Ken.
That end, you still volunteer in New Britain, is it?
Uh, volunteer firefighter.
Uh, Newington, I'm sorry. Okay.
Alright. So the, totally random question, right? What is NIMs one hundred point two hundred point seven?
I have it written down here, I was just gonna follow up after you guys, but then I was like, what?
National, National Incident Management System.
Oh, okay.
Different levels.
Okay.
By different specialties.
It's, it's how you do incident command, it's built in. Yeah, incident commander and then it's trainable and collapsible.
Okay, is he right?
Yes. Thank you, friends.
So I, so I see what you had that as highlights, so was that like some kind of certification?
Yeah, it's a, the national certification that came out after nine eleven. Um, at, at the time, they mandated it all, fire, firefighters, police officers and EMS get one, you know, get them. So they were all on the same page as far as incident command systems.
Okay. Um, another question I have is, um can you tell us a little bit about the lifesaving award that you received?
Uh, yep, so I received a state of Connecticut lifesaving award. Um, we had a patient in the city of New Britain who was stabbed. I think, I think it was over thirty-five, forty times at least. Um, she was found laying in the middle of the road. Um, myself, my partner, our supervisor and the fire department um worked hard to um keep her alive, transported her to Hartford Hospital. Um, at that point, they didn't think she was gonna survive, she ended up surviving. Um, she was a CCSU student, her father was very involved in the community, um very affluent and he went to the state representatives and brought us before the state legislator to appeal to the state citation.
And so why did you um leave from being a pyramid?
Uh, so I, I, I worked, you know, full-time EMS for eighteen years, city of New Britain. Saw a lot, learned a lot. Uh, it took a toll on my body, um you know, going up three floors, flights of stairs, carrying equipment to patients. And it was time for a change. Uh, my wife at the time, her family owned a family business in Newington and my father-in-law um offered me a position to be in the family business and I took him up on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have. You have the infamous question that you, that you need to ask.
Yeah, but she likes that.
Oh, uh, okay. Is there anything um that you think we should know about you that's not on here?
Uh, no, I mean, you know, I speak for itself, uh I, I like to enjoy myself when I'm not at work, I like to travel and uh go on vacation and do a lot of things outdoors. Um, I'm, I'm a very big sports person, so I look forward to um balancing my personal life and my work life and hopefully having an equal balance and being part of the team.
Do you like the Yankees?
Uh, I don't know about Sox.
Steelers?
I vote right, I vote for them.
Grassy sports, Steelers?
Giants.
Alright, so you should know what we gotta do.
So, the fire and the, and the ambulance, um you, you get the, the ambulance, you get a little bit of it. As a firefighter, you're kinda loved by everybody. I'm a fire, I just retired as a police officer, so I don't wanna lie, but you guys are loved, firefighters are loved by everybody.
Because we're very nice.
It's a water, you guys are overrated, it's a water that does all the work. Are you prepared to be the, to, to kind of have everything changed over where you were the first? You were the biggest target in the police department outside, outside of the, the officer in the uniform. Where somebody calls up and they're either panicked or they're mad or they're, they're anxious and they unload on you, call after call after call after call after call, are you ready for that?
Oh yeah, I believe that my EMS career helped me for that, uh dealing with um people, both the patients, the family members, um bystanders and, and different situations during my career that uh everybody has different ways that they act or believe in and just having to adapt to that and communicate the best that I can with them.
Okay. Um, uh, someone make a, anybody have, first of all, if I'm gonna ask that, anybody has any other questions, Ben? Who said you have any?
So I'm guessing we're gonna move into executive session. I move, I move to executive session.
Thanks. So what that means is that you're gonna stand outside for a little bit, we're gonna talk.
Okay.
About you, sorry, and then we'll call you back in.
Alright, sounds good.
Is there a place where the door's somewhere?
I move to call the meeting, that's fair. I move.
Okay, so, Mr. Ziegler, um we have sat and discussed and think that you wanna welcome me to our police department.
For heroes?
So now, um.
We have to have a motion.
Oh, we have to have a motion?
I move that we uh hire Kevin Ziegler effective. Okay, making me go slow.
Right, not cool. Is there specific paragraph?
I don't know what portion was, okay, they voted. I move to approve the hiring of Kevin Ziegler effective January twenty second, twenty twenty-five.
Sounds good.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, congratulations. Now you are more than welcome to say for the rest of this, or you can head out. Totally up to you.
That's good. There.
Alright, so next on the agenda is for us to review the general orders.
Everybody copy this, of your words?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be like three.
I have, I have to say, I have three.
Yeah. Yeah, while you're considering this, I've just been up to the. Two, one. I don't have, how you wanna do it, I can go through and just kinda give you sort of the, the updates as far as why we need changes or what we're recommending.
Have any of these been any problematic or attitude?
Nope.
Further questions regarding, but I'm confident.
Okay. So, so the first one, um the general order forty-two dash one, which is investigations. Reason that we're proposing the changes, uh we're actually some cleanup what we thought would be beneficial such as adding some content, uh content to the purpose section that's already including the body of the document. Uh, adding definitions, adjusting the case screening session, a section to a more contemporary practice. Uh, describing investigative call-out practices more clearly and reformatting the document for consistency. We also added a couple of topics, including career criminal individual offenders and exculpatory evidence to codify our practice. So, I guess I'll go individually, if you have any questions on investigations.
I have a couple. Um, I know later in the order, it mentions that cold cases for homicides are six months or later. But in the definition, it doesn't say how long a cold, a case has to not be solved to be cold. Is there a standard for that, or is it just?
No.
Okay. Um, and then on page eight, the review will be done by assessing collect and Roman numeral three?
Triple I.
Wait, what, okay, I don't know what that is, that's. So triple I is a name of something that's not supposed to be Roman, okay, that was uncertain to me. Um, but if everybody knows that, then we probably don't need to spell it out. Those are my questions on this.
Do you have any questions on?
Page four, number six, just wondering why there um, there's no one assigned to ensure accuracy as with the patrol officers, the previous one before. So, page four.
Page four, nine, yeah.
Number six.
Oh, okay.
So cases assigned to the, yeah. So my question is, why isn't there anyone assigned to ensure the accuracy as it ha- is for number five?
Oh, okay, each two, okay. Would you like mine?
Yes, cause Kate basically, essentially the patrol officers are, right in the initial, you're working. And then detectives are just supplementing. What's with their actions?
Page four, you said section?
Number six.
Number six, so section E, number six.
Yeah, cases assigned to detectives will be tracked through the records case management system?
Yep, and then, so you know how with number five, it says each um shift supervisor is responsible for ensuring the accuracy of information? So my question is, why isn't there someone to check the accuracy of the information that the detective is submitting?
So the, so that falls on, so each, so they're delineating that each supervisor is basically uh for that individual officer is responsible for, you know, reviewing their case reports. The detectives only have one supervisor, so it's already kind of assigned that, that that's, why, everything goes to that, that supervisor to review.
The original one was like, oh, well, please, somebody will do that. Um, and then on page five, number three, letter E. Um, would someone under the influence be considered as someone mentally incompetent? Because I'm quite sure you would.
Under the influence?
Yeah.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't do a polygraph on someone that's under the influence.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, they would, I mean, they, so, um even if, even if we, we can almost, you know, I would say not, it's really up to the polygrapher what, who they'll test and who they won't test. They won't, I just know even from surprise polygraph with the viewers, um they won't, they won't test anybody that's under the influence of any.
So, maybe we should have some language there to say that, because um they're two different illnesses.
Listen, they don't have any control over the polygrapher, doesn't it?
Right.
So, they don't have any control of who the polygrapher can and can't.
So, I mean, so, so, for us, uh, we're just trying to give like, uh, like a, I'll say a framework of, I'll say the certain people that can and can't be tested, you know, you know, you, you know, all the different ages and all that. So, the polygrapher will have a separate, so if we identify somebody that we want to send for testing, then they would, we would schedule an appointment, they would have to go there. And if they showed up and they were under the influence, the polygrapher's not gonna test them.
They actually ask you, I've had to take one, and they ask you that morning, right before they hook you up. Have you taken any mind holes, any substance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Oh, so we don't do it here?
We don't do it here.
And it's not our policy to just, so much wisdom, we're not saying.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, maybe, yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't clear, so.
Okay.
Right, so we would contract out, we would send them out, we don't have our own polygraphy unit here. So they would go somewhere else and that polygrapher is up to, it's up to them as far as who they test and all the different criteria that they would use.
Okay, so, so the individual can not, can be sober while they're here and then make it over there, okay, got you, makes sense now.
Right. Yeah.
I thought we were doing it here.
No, no, it's a pretty specialized skill, I, in, um, you know, I mean, you would be, I'd love to see us have one, but it shouldn't, honestly, it's just, it's not. It, it's so, you know, the amount that we would use it here and, and the, and the cost, it's just not really cost-effective for us to do it here, but. Okay. Went on to operating procedure forty-two dash one. Just some background, two thousand and twelve, Post General Notice twelve, dash zero eight, provided mandatory uniform policy and guidelines for eyewitness identification procedures pursuant to two prior public acts. At that time, we incorporated them into our investigations general order and was verbatim. Since they're primarily procedural, lengthy and detailed, we felt that it should stand alone in a new operational policy, uh OP operation, eyewitness identification procedures. So it's um just kind of breaking it out of the investigations and having its own stand, standalone policy. But again, it's, it's still uh verbatim basically from the state post. Any questions on that?
On, on page four, number eight, so the sample of which is attached. I'm assuming it's attached on the real thing and we just didn't get it. I just wanna make sure that that's.
Page four.
Number eight.
Right, uh.
Right. It's not attached to us, but I'm, I just wanna make sure that wherever the official, it's got the attachment.
Questions on that? Same now, we're on C G O one dash two, prohibited bias in profiling practices. For a long time, we've had an operational procedure prohibiting racial profiling and biased policing behavior. It was a procedure based, because there was considerable procedure aspects to collecting and reporting data from traffic stops. During a recent review, uh we thought it was better suited to have a general order and have some content change. I think it's a stronger order than the current order. The operational procedure was OP sixty-one dash one A profiling. The proposed general order is G O one dash two, prohibited bias in profiling practices. Both, that, copies of both. Not sure.
The new general order and the old one, it's uh, it's section D on the new one and E on the old one. Is that the state requirement to, to collect that?
It is.
Now, the Simsbury, can they opt out of that, or they must?
We must, it's, the whole, the whole policy is, is, it's a state policy, uh verbatim, verbatim. We obviously changed by, you know, Simsbury to, you know, to.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not a big fan of collecting all of that information on anyone.
Yeah, we have no choice, so.
Mandatory.
Does it go inside this database with like, like research?
It goes, yeah, so it's based out of, I believe, Central. And they do a yearly analysis of all kinds of different, like, user force, traffic stop data. They compile it, analysis.
Right, because, I mean, it was a summer moment, it says the officer is, will not arrive at the person's race or at the convergence. So that means, and I'm in favor of that, but that means he's guessing, or she's guessing.
That's the law, right, yeah.
So, it's, it's not even.
It's based on the actual perception.
Why? Yeah, no, no, no.
Wasn't there a state police officer, was there a state police officer that got in trouble for that recently? He was in the news for that?
He was just making stuff up. He wasn't, he wasn't just randomly, he was, he was making up stops.
So he wasn't even doing it, right.
So, just to confirm before I get into my nitpicking, this follows the state policy, so my commentary, it probably, it is what it is. But like, on page two, we're talking about Terry stops. Does every officer understand what a Terry stop is? Is that something you all have been, okay, just making sure. I'm gonna Terry, I'm gonna make sure. Difference between reasonable?
They're not, they have to know the law.
I know that, but it says Terry stop instead of the like, just making sure. And then again, like when we're collecting all of this data, gender of operator, male slash female, that's not accurate. That is no longer accurate, there should be other, non-binary, none your business, there should be something and it's not in here. But if that's the state, are we allowed to add?
Can't add anything, although I've heard that the state is coming out with a modification.
Okay.
Soon, I don't know how quickly, but it will be modified, I think there are some changes coming down the pipe in that regard, but right now there's not.
The more review here doesn't matter, really.
Pretty much.
That's all I got.
Okay, so I have to go through each order and?
Correct, okay, hold on, I get.
You have the rule for that, you know, I said?
No, I'll make up. She didn't give me a nice handy dandy, but I know today's date and I was one twenty-two. I move that we approve general order forty-two dash one, investigations, effective January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right.
I move that we approve operational procedure OP forty-two dash one C, effective January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor?
Nine, we didn't have a second.
A second, a second.
I move that we approve general order G O one dash two, effective January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, review of old business? There is none, okay. I make a motion that we adjourn five thirty-four C M.
All in favor?
Aye.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions. It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping to work towards my college degree. S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsberry's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsberry's voice.
Simsberry's voice.
Together, we can ensure that S C M continues to drive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution.
Counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsberry Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.